Kuz?
Here.
Harris?
Go ahead.
Carlson?
Here.
Kuyper?
Here.
Olson? Oops, sorry. Seivertson?
Here.
Zingy?
Here.
Can you tell who we're going to?
Please join me in the pledge allegiance. My pledge allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. The first thing we did have was a public hearing, but that's been canceled. It brings us down to Communications. We do have one proclamation I'd like to read tonight for Direct Support Professionals Recognition Week, whereas direct support professionals, direct care workers, personal assistants, personal attendants, in-house support workers, and paralegal professionals are the primary providers of long-term support and service for millions of individuals, whereas a direct support professional must build a close and trusted relationship with a disabled patient, whereas direct support professionals provides a broad range of support such as transportation, food preparation, bathing, dressing, and other daily affairs, whereas a direct support professional provides essential support to help keep an individual with disabilities connected to their family and community, whereas direct support professionals helps disabled individuals to live productive lives and are the key to helping an individual with disabilities to live successfully in their community and avoid more costly institutional care. Whereas the majority of direct support professionals are employed in home and community-based settings in the United States, this trend is projected to increase over the decade, and there is a growing shortage of direct support professionals throughout communities across the United States. Now, therefore be resolved that I, Lou Williams III, Mayor of the City of Ketchikan, Alaska, do hereby proclaim September 13th through 19th, 2015, as Direct Support Professionals Recognition Week and commend its observance to all citizens. Do we have anybody here to accept that tonight?
Reagan?
Thank you.
Go ahead and say a few words.
Let her rip. Hello? Am I on? I will be brief. Okay. I really feel that these are the unsung heroes of our community, and I'm so happy that you have come forth with this proclamation. I feel extremely honored to accept it on behalf of all of the direct service professionals in our community. I thank you very much. Please remember them, the 13th through 15th month.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right. Okay, we had a letter from the communities that brings us down to persons to be heard. Spencer starts off. No political speeches.
It's supposed to have a vote for me on the back of your shirt.
Yeah, right. Spencer Strasburg, 618 Canyon. And that mayor really messed me up. My thought there, I thought I had it all together. I'm just here to kind of expand on the e-SIG tobacco tax thing a little bit. I'm not really sure where we're at exactly with it. I know there's been word of still kind of kicking around, and I'm not sure if it made it to this agenda, but I think maybe it's being talked about. So just to give a little more information as we talk more about it and we think about the structure of this, I think is the most important thing. As I said before, I'm not necessarily opposed to a tax. I'm opposed to the way that tax is structured. It's unfair. It's discriminatory. It needs to be reworked about 1,000 ways from Sunday. So let's just take one small segment tonight, and that'll be the discriminatory nature of that tax. And that is, we're kind of targeting the 1.2, we want the $1.2 million from about how many smokers here in Ketchikan? Maybe, my guess is, I think if we have 8,000, I wouldn't think more than about half of the people are smokers, so I'm going to give you like about 4,000 people or something. So we're kind of working hard on this 4,000 people over here. And then meanwhile, let's just talk about what do we do with the tourism industry? So at our last council meeting when we talked about the e-SIG thing, I think Matt Olson was the one that said, hey, we still have these problems. You know, we have problems with these cigarette butts on the ground. We've got to pick those up. So we need to continue on with getting this money and stuff. So I kind of thought, gosh, you know, how do those people play into this? Do they play into this problem? I think, well, they probably do play into the problem because they don't have ashtrays when they get here, you know? Our guys got ashtrays. So if someone's throwing a cigarette butt on the ground, it's likely to be coming, there's a certain portion of that problem coming from those cruise ships. So have we asked, hey, cruise ship people, what are you kicking in for the same problem that the people here in Ketchikan are getting nailed $1.2 million for? The answer to that is zero. Does anyone really know how cigarette sales work in a cruise ship? Do they pull up to the port and start sailing stuff, and then they come to the burrow and say, hey, guys, here's our tax money for selling this stuff? Nope. No, they don't. They've got kind of a system going here that's working real good for them. See, before they roll up to Alaska waters, they make an announcement saying, hey, we got cigarettes down here for $4 a pack. Grab all the cigarettes you can now, because when we get into Alaska waters, we stop selling, and when you buy them in town, they're $10 plus. Well, the people come in droves to buy cartons before they get here, and there's a few people. Those are the people that I generally sell cigarettes to. Those are the ones that went, dang, I forgot to get them before we got into Alaska waters. So I ask myself, why don't they just buy tax stamps, you know, from our state? And then when they roll in here, we've got the $2 tax on top of the $4, and then the cigarettes are $6, and they sell them, and then they give us a cut of the action. It doesn't pay them to do that because they don't create that demand, you know? See, people aren't rushing there to get them. And then maybe half of them people don't even bother to buy them on the boat. They buy them in Ketchikan here, you know? And then we sell those cigarettes, and we make money off them. So they go, oh, that's not a really good business plan. I think we're better off to tell them, hey, they're going to be $10. Come and buy all you can, and starve them out a little bit because we'll increase our sales that way. And hey, by the way, it's a good thing that the city of Ketchikan's going to throw $3 more dollars on that pack because that's going to even drive them to our sales more. So really, we're protecting the profits for those cruise ships, yet we're taking it from those 4,000 people. We want a million too. We haven't said a thing to these people. Now, they didn't pay the $2 state tax when they came in, and they wouldn't pay your $3 tax. They'd be getting $5 savings while your people here in Ketchikan are getting nailed for that $1.2 million. But they contribute to the same problems. They probably throw their cigarette butts on the ground, and they stand down here at the Red Bridge, they smoke cigarettes, watch our kids catch fish and stuff, and display smoking in front of them, and all of those kind of things, but we haven't said a thing to them. We probably don't want to offend those guys because they're making money, you know? They bring all those people to our town. So we don't want to offend those guys and say, hey, can't we get some of that money? Or maybe we should get another dollar for that head tax because we've got this problem like Matt Olson said, we've got to pick up them cigarette butts. Have we asked, can we get another dollar from the head tax for their portion to pay in and contribute to this problem? I don't think anybody's asked at all. So if, you know, I'm sure everyone can kind of see here, well, it's kind of interesting how we don't say anything to them, but we're really hard on this population here that's already paying $11 a pound for chicken or $4 a gallon for gas. We're really working on these 4,000 people. We've got 950,000 of them coming in that we go, that's okay, they get cheap cigarettes out of here, so we don't worry about that problem with them. That's not consistency. That's discriminatory. So then I got to say, okay, you guys are going to kind of decide what you're going to do here. At the last council meeting, I think Mr. Kuz said, but didn't we decide this already? Can't we just do it on our own? And if I paraphrase back to you how that tastes a little bit from this side, it's kind of like, hey, we decided we wanted to do something. Can't we just ram it down their throat? So it's like distasteful on this end. And so I think to myself, hmm, I guess we could. Could just do it. Most of the people that I've talked to have just screamed to say, hey, let the voter have a shot at this one, because I think they'd probably shoot it down. Doesn't sound very good from many different people's perspective, smokers, non-smokers, all kinds of people. There's a lot of controversy about this one. So it comes down to, whoa, this issue, do we let it out to the voter or don't we? That's what we get down to. And I think to myself, hmm, where do I stand? Because I'm a big player in this too. I'm kind of a big player like that cruise ship guy. Not that big, but I'm pretty big. I'm the biggest e-SIG seller in town. I've got a whole lot of people coming in there, a whole lot of people telling me, hey, you know, stand up for us, do this stuff. So I say to myself, if I'm going to stand on one side or the other, I'm going to have to make a choice. Am I going to support this tax if someone rams it down my throat? Probably not. Just like them cruise ships do. I'll route all of those sales outside of the city because it makes more sense. And then you guys will lose those sales, all of those sales, all of that tax money, all that stuff, and you're not really doing good business because that's what this is. City is kind of like a business. If you're not really competing and you're saying, eh, let's just throw three, got $3 on those guys, we'll take what we can get, don't worry about those $950. If people don't want to play ball with that, they'll just bail. I could legally move all of those e-SIG sales somewhere else, to some other city. Just show people, all you've got to do is order them here. And maybe some other guy in some other city would take care of me, and then I'd be working for him in another city instead of working for you in this city. And I would just route those sales somewhere else, and maybe he'd send me to Hawaii a couple of times a year or something like that, something to be worked out like that. There would be loss. What's that?
I said, are you trying to cut a deal?
No, I'm just trying to explain how one cause has another effect. You've got to think deeper when you start talking about taxes. You've got to structure them in such a way that they make sense. Most people, like Mr. Libran pointed out the other day, the black market, are you kidding me? I mean, I've got a feeling that the black market cigarettes that get sold in the school are now going to be worth $3 a pack more. Wow. Anybody who's bootlegging cigarettes just got a raise, you know? It's a terrible tax, and I can assure you, I'm not going to stand behind it. I've learned a ton of information since I got involved in this thing. I also learned this. I learned that every person in the state of Alaska can legally import in two cartons of cigarettes per month without paying the $2 state tax and without paying your $3 tax. They could bring those in on their own, two cartons per month. That's $5 a pack savings. That's $50 a carton. If I started teaching people how to do that, if they walked into my store, I'd make a buck a pack. The only reason I make a buck a pack is to cover my cost for selling. I want people to come in and say, give me a pack of smokes. And then I reach in and I go, you ever think about it? E-SIG? That's how I help to do the work that I do. So I don't make a ton of money off cigarettes. I'll just send them somewhere else. And just like I taught everybody what e-SIGs were, I'll teach them how to get those two cartons a month, every month, and they'll all love me. They'll come into my store more often going, how else can you help us, Spencer? I'm saving $50 a carton on smokes, $100 a month. Help me out. That's pretty good financing. That's the kind of competitive stuff that goes on. You guys got to get competitive and think about that. And you think about your tax structure. It's really important. One cause has an effect somewhere else, you know? Yeah. A dollar raise on a pack of smokes drops cigarettes in minors by 7 percent, whatever that fact was. There's got to be other facts out there about $1 does what to the black market system. That's the balance that we have to look at. Is it worth 7 percent decline? Or is there another way that we could do this? Maybe we could do it through enforcement instead of cessation. We've only wrote six tickets for minor smoking in 18 months. We have an enforcement issue. District Attorney says, we're not going to prosecute them kids for that. We don't have the money for that. We send them to youth court, let them do a poster. Ketchikan Youth Court comes in here and says, well, we got the 19-year-olds that are selling it to the younger kids. That's where our problem is. Well, of course it is, because when they were 14, 15, and 16, we didn't teach them that we meant business, that this was a state law that they weren't supposed to smoke, and there was a police officer who would enforce that state law. We didn't do that. So when it got to 19, and we told them, hey, don't be bootlegging them cigarettes back to them kids. Does he take us serious? Well, no, he don't, because the whole time we've been teaching this kid, it's not that big a deal. You just do a poster or something. It's just smoking. So we either enforce the law or we don't, you know? But to sit here and impugn a really small amount of people when there's a whole lot bigger problem out here, this is a terrible way with this tax. This is, we're not, this is just a money grab. We're not trying to really get to the issue. Anyway, I've wasted a lot of time tonight getting this last point across, but this is pretty much the last one for me. Either this is a fair tax, and I'll stand behind it, or it's not, and I won't. And I wonder how many other retailers out there will feel the same way I do, you know? Maybe this will be a loss in revenue, or maybe this will be a gain. That's something to think about.
Thanks, Spencer.
Thank you.
Terry? Kathleen?
I'm Terry Metcalf. I am here visiting from Prince of Wales Island. I live in Port Protection. I'm a longtime resident of Ketchikan. I grew up here. And my friend Mary Henrickson and I are collaborating on an exhibit at the Ketchikan Arts and Humanities Council this Friday. It is entitled Abstract Reality. The reception is 5 to 7 tomorrow evening. It's free, and it's open to everyone. The artist presentation will be Saturday from 11 to 1. The artists will talk about, us artists, I'm reading, someone else wrote this. Us artists will talk about our work, and we will head a thing where the participants will have fun with some hands-on process and whatnot. But I also would like to add that I would like to thank you for supporting the Arts and Humanities Council, because I, having grown up here, when I saw downtown kind of sell its soul, I left. I moved over to Prince of Wales Island, and the last five or six years, I don't know, as far as time goes, I have seen a rejuvenation in this town, and it's through the art world. And I just want to say thank you for supporting them, and I would like to tell them thank you for allowing me a place to present my work and further my adventure. Thank you.
Thanks, Terry. Kathleen?
Kathleen Light, Director of the Arts Council. As you can see, Terry and Mary's exhibit is the opening of our 2015-16 gallery season. We have a great season lined up. You'll notice we have several artists from outside of Alaska, outside of Ketchikan in this season. Our gallery process is an open process. It's an application process, and it's pretty strict. We had lots of applications, and we're really pleased with this exhibit, this season. We've been putting the finishing touches on all of our other programming for the schedule for 2015-16, including art classes for youth and adult, our Torch Knights Performing Series, our Artist Development Series, our new Stories at Latitude 56 series featuring Ketchikan locals telling their stories about their lives and their experiences, our Winter Arts Fair, wearable art show, and much, much more. Our season guide with all of that information should be hitting the mailboxes in the next few weeks, so please watch for that. I really encourage you to go to Terry and Mary's exhibit. It is beautiful, and they've been working really hard. Mary Henrickson, of course, is an artist in our community that has, is very well-known throughout Alaska, and we are very lucky to have her in our community. We're also very lucky to have Terry travel to Ketchikan and show her work in our community. So please show them your support and come to the exhibit opening on tomorrow night from 5 to 7, or their artist presentation Saturday from 11 to 1. If you have any questions about my Board of Directors' letter to the council, I will stick around to see if you want to add those items to the agenda in the future. If you have questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions for Kathleen? Thank you very much. Don?
Yes.
Come on up if you want to speak.
Wonderful. Council members, my name is Don Wright. I live at 707 Harris Street here in Ketchikan. I heard some disturbing innuendo a couple of days ago. A person who was at the forum meeting yesterday came back saying to me, Don, the city council has been talking about only millionaires being accepted for applying for dispensary licenses. Is there any trace of this?
No. We haven't even decided if we're going to have dispensaries.
I'm not doing nothing yet.
If there is going to be, I'm absolutely.
Well, then I guess that I really don't have any commentary.
We'll keep you posted on everybody. It's going to be definitely an issue all next year.
All right. Thank you ever so much.
Thanks, Don. That's the last person on the list. Is there anybody else here that wants to speak to the council tonight before we move on? Seeing none, we'll move into the agenda. Brings us down to consent agenda. I was thinking, since everything's pretty light on the, we have about three executive sessions, of adding 7, 8, 2, 3, 4, and 5 to the consent, but that's up to the council.
So move.
What is that? 2, 3?
4 and 5.
Yep.
4 is a credit back to us for 350-some thousand.
2, 3, 4. Yes, ma'am.
No problem with that.
Okay, then we'll add those to the consent agenda. Do we have a motion to consent?
Your Honor, I move to consent.
Moved in second. Madam Coates, can you read items?
Approval of minutes, regular city council meeting of August 20th, 2015. A budget transfer for change order number one to the 2014 Audit Services Contract with MECAM, Richardson, and Company. Resolution number 152604. Wait, we withdrew that. Yep, sorry. Exempting the procurement of annual 4G slash LTE maintenance and support services for the telecommunications division from competitive bid written quotation requirements of the Ketchikan Municipal Code, and that's with Ericsson Incorporated. Exempting the procurement of network provisioning platform and annual maintenance and support services for the telecommunications division from the competitive bid written quotation requirements of the Ketchikan Municipal Code with Incognito. An insurance brokerage agreement, the award of contract number 15-28, the Ted Ferry Civic Center Spring Flow Replacement, and that's with Ketchikan Mechanical Incorporated. Change order number five to contract number 1338A, construction services for the Ketchikan Medical Center Expansion Project with Leighton Dawson Joint Venture Constructors. And finally, a budget transfer, the Police Department Training Request.
All right, anybody have any questions?
The only thing I'd like to do is, having read this proposal by the Police Department for their training, I'm pretty impressed by the brochure and the statement of what they're hoping to accomplish, and so I'd like to thank the Police Department for bringing that forward and adding it to their program.
All right. Call the roll.
Harris? Zingy?
Yes.
Seivertson?
Yes.
Kuyper?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Kuz?
Yes.
All right, that passes 6 to 0. That brings us down to a new business 781 meeting to review and discuss reports on department overtime. Do we have a motion or a suggestion? Judy?
Well, I guess I'm open. I think that it might be a good idea to get it done before we get into budget, and, you know, most of us have spent the time working on this report, so I'm thinking to do it while we're all at this table.
So we need to make it later. I don't have a calendar.
What?
I guess we can't do it then. There you go.
Okay. We have a meeting tonight and a meeting on the 17th. You want to do it on the 24th?
24th sounds good.
Sounds good to me.
All right. Which shall be said, shall be done. So we'll have that meeting on the 24th. I don't think we need a motion or anything. Okay? And then that brings us down to item 8, vouchers. Ketchikan Daily News, 491796. Do we have a motion?
Your Honor, go ahead. I move for approval of vouchers for Ketchikan Daily News in the amount of $4,917.96.
Moved in second. And call the roll.
Kuyper?
Sure.
Carlson?
Yes.
Kuz?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes, ma'am.
Seivertson?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Okay, that brings us to manager report. Dave, do you have anything to add?
Nothing to add, Your Honor.
I think everybody's seen that radar speed sign. I have had.
More, more. I like those.
I've had people say we should have them coming into, into north and south.
Yeah.
But I tell them I just bring it up at the meeting.
It's probably DOT, isn't it?
Yeah, that's probably it, so. Anybody have any questions? Go ahead, Bob.
No, I don't have any questions about the, that one.
Okay. City Clerk's file?
Nothing, Your Honor.
City Attorney's file? Is he here?
No.
Okay. Future agenda items?
Your Honor?
Yep.
I don't know if it's necessarily an agenda item, but you know, we have a water usage rate that I utilize as I look at it to see where the, how we're doing month to month, and it'll be helpful when we get into the discussion at a later date about rates. Well, I think we're also going to be discussing our electrical rates, and I think I'd like to see some rates on our power consumption and what we feel our potential load growth is or where the stumbling blocks are going to be as we address rates in the future, just so we have some background information on that. I did see in the paper where we had drawn down Silvis by about 50 feet, and so we're hoping the rain gods are going to fill that back up, and apparently they've been doing a pretty good job about it. They've been doing a pretty good job about it. But, you know, moving forward, we're looking at this rate structure, and I just think it'd be nice if we had some idea of what kind of power we're producing, where it's going, and what it's costing us.
Dave?
Yeah, Your Honor, I guess I'd like to follow up on the letter that we got tonight from the Arts Council regarding the old fire station property. I think we should probably move ahead to determine what our usage. Are we, are we serious about making it a power facility for the, or are we still going to sell it? We need to, you know?
Well, let's make it an agenda item at the next meeting. We'll talk about all the options if we want to go into which direction or not, or just leave it the way it is. Excellent. All right, anything else? Mayor, Council comments. Dick?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Judy?
No.
Jan?
No.
Bob?
Nope.
Dave?
No, sir.
JJ?
I'm going to get you down, but nope.
Okay. What group, what school groups here? Government class? You guys are.
You're early this year. What's up?
You picked the right meeting.
Okay, well, you picked the right meeting. How long are you supposed to be here?
Oh, wow.
Oh, good. You picked a meeting where we're all done, and we're going to go into, for three executive sessions, so nothing will be happening. We'll be in the other room, so I hate to disappoint you of not seeing all the fun action, but that was our meeting tonight, so.
And we'll sign your papers.
And we'll sign anything you have or anything as soon as we make a motion to go into executive session. All right, the first executive session is for the collective bargaining agreement between the City of Ketchikan and the Ketchikan Professional Fire, Firefighters Association Local 2761. Do we have a motion?
Your Honor?
Go ahead, Bob.
I move that the city council declared consistent with the city manager's memorandum dated August 21st, 2015, it is in the best interest of the city to discuss negotiation regarding the collective bargaining agreement between the City of Ketchikan and the Ketchikan Professional Firefighters Association Local 2761, IAAF, in the executive session in accordance with the findings, the city council going to the executive session in accordance to KMC 2.04.025A1 and B2, and AS44.62.310C1 and 3, and discuss said negotiations and the auxiliary items described in the Ketchikan, in the city manager's memorandum dated August 21st, 2015, which matters include the need to discuss subjects and knowledge of which would have an adverse impact upon the finances of the city and upon the city's ability to negotiate favorable labor settlements.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Moved in second. Call the roll, please.
Seivertson?
Yes.
Kuz?
Yep.
Zingy?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes, ma'am.
Kuyper?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
All right, we'll adjourn out of this meeting and go another room. If you guys have anything you need signed, come on up, and we'll get them signed. If you guys have anything you need signed, come on up and we'll get them signed.
Your Honor, I move City Council to declare that consistent with the General Manager's memorandum dated August 21st, 2015, it is in the best interest of the city to discuss negotiations regarding a collective bargaining agreement between the City of Ketchikan and the Public Safety Employees Association in executive session. In accordance with that finding, the City Council go into executive session in accordance with KMC 2.04.025 A1 and B2 and AS 44 period 62 period 310. Oh, my screen. See, it's so long, my screen doesn't even want to see it. We need shorter. Okay, AS 44 dot 62 dot 310 C1 and 3 to discuss said negotiations and the auxiliary items described in the City Manager's memorandum dated August 21st, 2015. Which matters include the need to discuss subjects the knowledge of which would have an adverse impact upon the finances of the city and upon the city's ability to negotiate favorable labor settlements.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Me and Bob won't be able to attend this one. So, call the roll, please.
Zingy?
Yes.
Kuss?
Yep.
Kifer?
No.
Harris?
Yes.
Seaberton?
That's Dane.
Carlson?
Yes.
Okay, that passes four to one, doesn't it?
Yes, it does.
Thank you. We're out of this meeting and into the other. We'll be waiting for you guys. That's executive session's over. Dave, what happened?
There's no action to be taken tonight, Your Honor.
Thank you. That brings us down to the final executive session. Collective bargaining between the State of Ketchikan, KPU, and International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers, 1547. Do we have a motion?
Your Honor?
Go ahead.
I'm with the City Council to declare that consistent with the General Manager's memorandum dated August 21st, 2015, it is in the best interest of the city to discuss negotiations regarding a collective bargaining agreement between the State of Ketchikan, DVA, Ketchikan Public Utilities, and International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers, Local 1547. In executive session, in accordance with the finding, the City Council go into executive session in accordance to KMC 2.04.025 A1 and B2 and AS 44.62.310 C1 and 3 and discuss negotiation of the authority items described in the General Manager's memorandum dated August 21st, 2015. Which matters include the need to discuss subjects the knowledge of which would have an adverse impact upon the finances of the city and upon the city's ability to negotiate favorable labor settlement.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Call the roll, Madam Clinton.
Carlton?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Kifer?
Sure.
Kuss?
No.
Seaberton?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Hey, that passes five to one.
I'm only voting against your motions, but you know I didn't speak against it.
Yeah, we're doing good.
We're back in from executive session. That's executive session's over. Dave, what happened?
There's no action to be taken tonight, Your Honor.
Thank you. That brings us down to the final executive session. Collective bargaining between the State of Ketchikan, KPU, and International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers, 1547. Do we have a motion?
Your Honor?
Go ahead.